All right, well, we've called the order, and as soon as Maria, you've settled or can call the roll.
Commissioner Nargle, President, Chairman White.
President.
Commissioner Sibley.
Present.
Commissioner Jacoby.
Here.
Commissioner.
He's here.
He's here.
Oh.
Commissioner Barnard.
Here.
And Commissioner Fenster.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and then we want to have a little welcome everybody here, and introductions for those of us in the room who don't know each other.
I guess that leaves me. Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Jeremy Terrell, I'm of the Assistant City Attorneys of the City Attorney's Office. I joined the office in January of this past year, so relatively new to the office, but Planning Development is one of my many clients. So to be set, the Historic Preservation Commission has legal questions, most of those questions will come to me eventually. I've got three presentations this afternoon, and let you brainstorm and do all your things that you're going to do in the end of work session.
Yeah, I will mention that we're down a few attorneys, and our city attorney's out of town this week, so Jeremy's got other things. So he's going to do his presentation on open meetings, and then he'll have to leave this fun time, so.
Well, that gives us the opportunity to make up things that are.
Yeah, the law is going to let us stand in our way.
It's called job security.
This is, in fact, a public meeting, so we will take a moment to open up to any public that would like to be.
Be there.
Okay, let the. Let's let the record show that Commissioner Gaiu is present.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll open up the public invited to be heard, for anyone here in public, seeing none, we will close. Public invited to be heard, and move on to discussion items. So our first is a presentation from Jeremy here, Open Meetings Record Law, Quasi Judicial Proceedings. Figured it was a good opportunity to do a refresher for everyone, some new Commissioners, some haven't seen this for a while. And we are a funky group, in a way, not like all the, you know, parks board, and so on, so. Appreciate you coming down and taking a little time in the afternoon, unfortunately, I'm busy.
I'm not bitter at all.
You guys wouldn't have picked another day. So again, my name is Jeremy Terrell, the City Attorney's Office, and the presentation's on open meetings, open records, and quasi judicial proceedings. We'll also throw in the gift ban in for some of the fun. So we'll start off talking about CORA, which is the Colorado Open Records Act, and move over to the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Amendment 41, which is the gift ban as part of the Colorado State Constitution. And then lastly, we'll talk about quasi judicial proceedings. So CORA, or the Colorado Open Records Act, was passed in 1963. It's very similar, but slightly different than the federal version, which is FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act. The goal of CORA is to have an open and transparent government. Why? And that's because it's a people's government, they should be able to see what is happening. The idea is that if we're creating public records, and I'll talk about what that means, that people as a right should be able to see it, with very limited exceptions. So CORA does apply to municipal governments and home real municipalities, which does include Longmonts. And it necessarily goes to public officials of the city of Longmonts, which includes everyone on this commission. As I said, the starting place is generally that any record is public unless there's an exception to it. So some common exceptions for open records is attorney-client privilege. So to the extent I were to provide legal advice to the commission or to any staff members, that's protected and that's not part of CORA. There's also some exceptions called a deliberative process, so to the extent there's like a discussion about how to address a certain policy matter, that could also not be subject to CORA as well. But again, those are exceptions, and the norm is that if there's an open record, if there's a record, it's open to the public. Now, what is a record? A record is all writings, them as remained, made, maintained, or kept by the city of Longmont in the course of official city business. So when I say all writings, this includes email, letters, memos, any sort of publication that the city could make or maintain. So for example, emails you were to send to Glenn or Jennifer, those could be open records, because our emails are open records.
What about chats, Jeremy, not to get you? Well, we use chat now a lot.
Yes.
In Teams, in the office, and I often wonder.
That's the next slide, so the next slide does include texts. So it does include Teams, it does include texts. So for example, if you were to text Glenn on his cellphone, that could be an open record if it's discussing official city business. Even though it's not maintained or kept by the city of Longmont, since Glenn's personal phone, it's made by a representative of the city of Longmont, or to a staff member of the city of Longmont. So text messages would apply, emails, outlook calendar invites, any sort of databases, so Excel spreadsheets, those are all records. We don't use quite Javers Office and City anymore, but Teams certainly. Paper examples, or memos, letters, things of that nature. And then notes, maps, or contracts as well. So, you know, when we have a settlement agreement, for example, on behalf of the city, that could be an open record as well, even if we have a confidential provision in there, normally that's an open record as well. And the reason.
Yes.
So I have a separate email for this HPC. But then I get an invitation to a meeting, I just put it on my calendar, set me my, I have to have a separate calendar to keep it, keep it, me, my whole calendar to be an open record.
No, your whole calendar will be an open record, just that invite itself. So the idea is that, you know, if it's a larger matter, it's a larger document, and only part of it is an open record, just that part of it to be. So if we had an open records request for any Commissioner Barnett, Burt, invites on your calendar, that's, you could produce just those invites, but not your entire calendar. Good question. And the reason why we talk about open records and why it's so important is that, since these are all public records, when you're doing city business, it's important you think about what you're saying in a record before you send it. So we always have what's called a front page times call test. If you don't want the times call test, don't put it in writing.
When in doubt, phone calls.
When in doubt, phone calls, because phone calls aren't public records. The call itself would be the showing that you called someone, but not the audio conversation. Before this, I was an Assistant Attorney General for the state of Illinois. We also had a very similar open records act, and one of my clients was having an affair with another employee through email. And that's one of the many things we had to produce as an open record. So if you don't want public to see it, don't put it in writing as you're conducting city business. Switching to Open Meetings Law, this one, I think we're all a little more familiar with, just because this is an open meeting right now. And so generally, the Open Meetings Law declares that, you know, public policy is, that public policy is public business. You can't do meetings in secret. What does it mean? Normally, you have to produce agendas in advance of meetings, you have the right to have publicly heard, you have to give notice of what's being discussed at a meeting, and the meeting should be open to the public as well. And a meeting is defined as any gathering by elected officials or board of commissions to discuss public business. This could include by phone, in person, Zoom, Teams, email, text, radio, means of communication. We'll talk about the limit, what constitutes a meeting here in a second. But a meeting doesn't have to be in person, it could be over the phone, it could be over email, it could be over Teams. So we need to be cognizant of what we're doing when we're talking about city business.
Hey Jeremy, a question. How many Commissioners in the discussion constitutes a meeting that needs to be noticed?
Three or more. So, good question. So if one Commissioner is talking to another Commissioner, or one Commissioner is talking to Glenn or Jennifer, that's not a meeting, but as soon as there's a third person from the commission, that's a meeting now.
We just thought I didn't say anything nice a couple weeks ago.
Is that related to a form? Absolute number three?
It's an absolute number, yes.
Because I've worked in, like, the state of Florida, it was two.
Yep, every state's a little different. And so we'll talk about some common examples of open meeting kind of issues, but one big one is email. So for example, when the email went out with the packets for the agenda for this retreat, if someone was to click Reply All, or reply to all the Commissioners, that would actually constitute an open meeting. And since we had not noticed that email, evident violation of Open Meetings Law. So email's a big one that we run into issues with, and we've a lot of questions about. So if you have a question online, please shout them out too, it's very informal, it's a short presentation. So the Colorado Open Court has clarified the scope of the Open Meetings Law to apply only to gatherings where there's demonstrated link between the meeting and the policymaking powers of the government entity holding or attending the meeting. So merely discussing matters of public importance don't trigger an Open Meeting Law. So if we were all to have a happy hour after the retreat today, as long as we didn't talk about work at all, as long as we didn't talk about the Historic Preservation Commission or the work before the commission, that's fine. You're welcome to be friends with each other, you're welcome to discuss non-Historic Preservation Commission issues together. Echoes, last point, chants in here are social gatherings, at which discussion of public business is not the central purpose. Those are not open meetings. So if it's a chant, or if it's a social gathering, as long as you're not talking about public business, there's no Open Meeting Law violation. And so here's our slide about the three or more, so three or more members of city council or board or commission get together to discuss policymaking, it's a meeting, it needs to be open to the public. Public meetings do require full and timely notice of meeting, it must be 24 hours, and specific agenda information when possible. We must take minutes and record the meetings as well. Similar to CORA, there are some exceptions as well to Open Meeting Law. So under open meetings, we can't have what's called an executive session. Executive sessions are parts of open meetings that are private, and that the public is not allowed, and nor is there really allowed to read the minutes of that executive session. So some common examples would include, if there's a real property transaction, a personnel matter, or illegal advice. So if the commission needed to have legal advice concerning a certain issue during a meeting, we could call an executive session, at which point I could give my legal advice, but it can only apply to legal advice. So to the extent we want to start having policy considerations, that's not protected, and we can't be having an executive session. But the question is, can we do this? Is it illegal? That is a part of the executive session that could be for legal advice. If for any reason you think there is a need for an executive session based on the agenda or some topic that's being discussed, please let your staff liaison in the City Attorney's Office know in advance. That way, myself, or Eugene, the city attorney, or someone else from our office can be there for the purpose of having an executive session. Is there any question?
A while ago, we were dealing with a barn out here, and I was scrambling around talking to different folks in the city. And I emailed Commissioner Martin, talking about it. She emailed me, actually, and I responded, and then, I forget the name of the, either City Lloyd, the main City lawyer, but he stepped in and said, "We were not able to discuss this, it was just the two of us," by email. It sounds like that would be allowed? No? He had a problem with that, because it was a real estate transaction, talking about the barn, and possibly the city acquiring it. So I'm a little confused. It has to be three or more usually?
For open meeting, for open meeting, it's three or more, namely Commissioners. There could have been a reason why Eugene advised, that may be because, it could have been the CORA issue, so that email discussion would have been open record. So perhaps that's why he was concerned about it, it's hard to say in the abstract of the laws. But that could have been one reason, it could have been exempt from the CORA requirements of the real estate transaction, we didn't want it in writing in the first place. It's hard to say in kind of the abstract of why that would have happened.
I tried to clarify it with Mr. Maia, and he couldn't explain it to me to my satisfaction, I'm still not, I'm still a little fuzzy on that. When in doubt, I'll ask you, I guess.
Because council might have taken action on it later?
Yeah. It could have been that issue.
He was concerned about a conversation outside the public hearing.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, it certainly could have been that issue as well, I don't know the circumstances, it's hard to say. It could also have fallen to, kind of more to Glenn's point, the quasi judicial realm, and we'll talk about the very act. So with quasi judicial proceedings, we have to be careful about what's done outside the scope of meetings to preserve everyone's ethics and ethical obligations, essentially. So this is the fun one, so the voters of the state of Colorado did pass Amendment 41 a number of years ago, I guess in 2006, looking at my own slide, which prohibits gifts to certain city and public officials. So again, this is a constitutional amendment, and generally, it says that government officials are prohibited from accepting a gift valued in excess of $50 from any person in the calendar year. This has been adjusted for inflation, and it's now $65. It'll remain $65 until next year, when it's reevaluated for inflation purposes. So what is a gift? Generally, a gift could include cash, it could be an honorarium, it could be travel expenses, entertainment, or special discount. So for example, if someone who had an application for the commission were to give you $75 on a check, saying, "Here's a little gift for you," and then asking to vote either way, that'd be a violation of the gift ban, even if they weren't trying to influence you, or they said they weren't influencing you. This also includes your spouses under the Ethics Commission. So the person applying before the board can't give your spouse a check and get around the gift ban, that still impacts you as well. Certain exceptions, so conferences where you're scheduled to speak, so if you're invited and scheduled to speak at a conference, your travel expenses may be paid, you can have meals there and all of that, that's all fine. Unsolicited tokens of appreciation of trivial value, or trivial value. So if someone just gives you like a postcard, or a plaque, or something, those are fine. And certainly, personal relationships, so they sent you, have a friend who has businesses before the commission, and if your friend routinely exchanges gifts with you, like at the holidays, you don't have to worry about that at the holiday time. That's an exception for personal friend relationships, or relatives as well. So there's a couple of limited circumstances where the Historic Preservation Commission operates in a quasi judicial proceeding. Generally, it's when Historic Preservation Commission is a decision-making body. So for the most part, most of the actions, the recommendations made to city council have been often linked to decision. Those aren't quasi judicial, those are legislative actions. But for decision-making, it's looking at applications for economic incentives, certificates of appropriateness, and then also certificate of hardships. Those are all the quasi judicial proceedings for Historic Preservation Commission. And so in those limited circumstances, since Historic Preservation Commission is a decision-making body, you're acting similar to a judge in a court of law, hence the quasi judicial capacity. And so quasi judicial proceedings, they have to apply existing criteria ordinances, so you have, you know, firm criteria that you're looking at for evaluating the decision. You have to consider facts of the specific property, has to be presented during a hearing with advance notice in a reasonable opportunity for your interested persons to present evidence and arguments. We'll talk about what all that means here in a moment, but the main idea is that you don't want to be making a decision concerning a certificate of appropriateness, certificate of hardship, or application for economic incentive, until you're in a meeting, you probably notice with the opportunity for people to present evidence and be heard. And the reason why all of those elements matter is for due process, which is a special protection and safeguards applied when ensuring a fair hearing for the applicant, when property rights are at stake. So if all those three circumstances identified, you know, someone's either has some sort of property interest or an economic interest in what HPC is deciding. And we don't want a decision made in secret, we don't want the idea that Commissioners are considering evidence outside of the hearing and things like that. And so it's all to ensure that person's due process rights aren't violated. So during these quasi judicial proceedings, HPC must apply the applicable criteria and base its decision solely upon the record of proceedings. So these include staff, national reports, and presentations. It could include community input received from notice of the hearings, so letters, emails, et cetera. It could also include testimony or evidence given at the hearing of someone wanting to testify in support or against the application as well. The important thing with quasi judicial proceedings is that we don't consider ex parte communication. So that HPC must not consider any information received outside the record. And so what that could entail is if you have a neighbor, or if you know someone about an existing property who has an application and who doesn't like the application. If they come up against, if they talk to you on the streets outside the hearing, if they email you, if they text you, if they give you a phone call after the hearing, and you notice before the commission, best rule of thumb is to tell them, "Hey, we need to come to the hearing, we can't discuss it over the phone." That's going to affect my impartiality. So that would be an ex parte communication, you know, communication discussing a decision before HPC is not part of the record. The best thing they can do is either send a letter, email, and advance the hearing, so it can be considered part of the evidence, or testify at the hearing itself. And the idea is that we want to have fair and impartial decision-making by ensuring disclosure of all evidence and argument at the hearing. And again, so if your contact or member of public concerning a matter before HPC that's worth deciding on, you should directly submit written comments, or attend the hearing and present testimony or evidence.
I assume that if she conducted some independent research on your own, which you used intellectually, but did not present documents, that would not constitute public record, not constitute public record.
It likely would not constitute public record, yes. And nor is it ex parte communication, et cetera. So you could, part of the, you know, the beauty of democracy and having citizen boards is that we all, in our own life experiences, make decisions. And so if, you know, to the extent you want to conduct your own, drive by the potential residents to look at, you know, whether or not certificate appropriateness is appropriate, that's fine, for the most part. It gets a little dangerous if you get out of your car, and let's say you talk to the property owner, that's an ex parte communication. If one of the neighbors walks up to you and starts talking to you about it, ex parte communication. If you're just physically driving in your car, and you don't leave your car, you don't look at any signs living on the lawn saying, "Don't vote for that, don't do this," then you're fine. So site visits are complicated, but in general, you know, that's part of your life experience that you could bring to the commission, and not have an ex parte communication issue. Does that answer the question? What's the penalty of violating the quasi judicial proceedings? So generally, there's an ex parte communication that's somehow discovered in the course of, you know, litigation or something like that. The decision of the Historic Preservation Commission can be found invalid. So it could overturn the decision, and there could also be legal remedies against the city in terms of attorney fees and costs, and things like that. In general, if you have an ex parte communication, even in burdened, the best thing you can do is to disclose it. So if it's limited, to cure the issue, you can disclose on the record of the hearing, "I talked to so-and-so, I didn't know they were going to talk about this issue, they told me that they don't like this application for certificate appropriateness, and they said it's really bad, I told them to stop at that point." If you disclose on the record it's limited, that's fine, you've cured the problem, ex parte communication. If it's extensive, the best thing you can do is recuse yourself of that decision. So if, you know, let's say someone rambling talks about something, and you don't know what they're talking about, and at the very end you realize it's actually somebody from the HPC that you're making a decision on, at that point, there's not really a good way of curing the problem, apart from recusing yourself. It'd be hard to, you know, regale the entire conversation ahead on the record, unless you can, in which case you might be able to, you know, cure yourself of that problem.
You could do that, though, right? Nevertheless, you could disclose the entirety of the exchange.
Yes, you could disclose the entirety of the exchange, you know, if you had a recording, or something like that, or just some affiliate memory. You could disclose it, and that should cure the ex parte communication issue.
So, yeah, if we're, say, somebody is proposing a big addition to their house, and we're, I'm going by and looking at, and the neighbor comes up to me and says, "Are you looking at that place? Are you thinking about that addition? It's horrible, I don't want to see that there." And you say, "Well, you can't talk to me about it, you can come to the meeting." "Oh, I don't want to come to the meeting and upset my neighbor, he's my next-door neighbor, he'll never talk to me again." So now I'm in that position, but if I went to the meeting, said, "A neighbor came, presented his objections," and I outlined everything he said, we were okay?
The best situation would be to tell him to come to the meeting himself, or to.
Right, but if he refuses because he doesn't want to upset his neighbor, then what, is it still acceptable to, without recusing myself, but able to just provide that conversation at the meeting?
Technically, yes.
Okay. It's getting hazy, I realize, I'm trying to.
It's hazy legal grounds, technically, it's fine, it doesn't give the best example of, you know.
Certainly encourage him to come to the meeting himself.
Send a meeting, or attend a hearing himself and testify, send in a written comment. I think that we could consider written comments, even though it's not signed, but now it is. I believe, I don't know if we've encountered that before, but.
Well, yeah, people send us any kind of email, I think.
I've never seen an anonymous email that, yeah, we didn't even make the people. I actually encourage people, if they call, to submit a written comment, so we have something on the record.
Right.
And if either of those show up or write a comment, even if they have discussed it with a Commissioner, then that's secure.
That's secure as long as the Commissioner also discloses the ex parte communication. You still have to disclose it, even if they also sent him a letter or attended the hearing, it's still to be disclosed. But again, the best situation, you know, if they start talking about it, tell them to stop, send them a letter, send them an email to the staff liaison or testify at the hearing. That's the best way of making sure there's no evidence of ex parte communication. And it all goes back to that due process and ethical obligations we have as city officials and city employees. So we wouldn't want one of our own projects to be tanked and private for reasons we don't know. We wouldn't want our property interests and due process rights violated if we can't have an opportunity to defend ourselves and defend our application. And that was the last slide I had. Is there any other questions concerning open meetings, records, quasi judicial? I can answer this time before I let you all continue discussing. Well, if you have any legal questions, the best way is to reach out to the staff liaison, or directly to our office, and we can determine who best can handle it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeremy.
There you go, it's back on clock.
Yeah. Steve, I'm keeping an eye on the clock.
It's all right.
So our next item is a full slew of discussion items. And so basically, what we will decide to do is put the demolition code review kind of at the end, because that is a little bit here, and just talk through this, it's more about goals for this upcoming year, and things to crack it on. So as a kind of rough outline, I thought we'd spend a little more time on basically two, three, and four, and not plan on diving too deep into some of these other ones. So, Eric, community outreach, do you have some slides for us?
I do, so really just sort of discussion points on community outreach, is that something that's been discussed? So really just wanting to, kind of hear some more, you know, what, how, what purpose would this community outreach be? Is it to inform the community, is it to get feedback and information, data essentially from the community? Is it a little bit about? And then what form should that outreach take?
Well, the reason I have to ask the question, I don't know if I was set up for this or get it on anyway, is I had noticed the last, maybe two years, the city council, I started community outreach programs, where two council posts will go to a shopping area, or some center, and invite the community, targeting, paying the community in that area, to meet with them, talk about what's happened in general, the issues they might have. And we talked about, so that was the first item I had. Just start there. The other, I don't know if, conservation overall, we can talk about.
That's later on.
Yeah, so the other piece.
It's more generic.
Right, in terms of outreach, was building on some things we did with Karen, when she was our liaison. So we had a couple, she put together a letter that went out, I think, to property owners in our, basically in our original town. It might have included people that own landmark homes in the vision, but I don't know. But anyway, it was a letter that basically went out to people and said, "Look, I don't know if you know this, but if you, you know, if you have a landmark home, you have an opportunity to potentially get reimbursed for, you know, for work that you do on your home, if you need to make repairs and so on, you know, that exists. And further, if you don't have a landmark home, but you have a home that is historically significant, you might want to consider landmarking it, because." significant, you might want to consider landmarking it because you'll be able to get reimbursed for, you know, potentially reimbursed for what you do in the home." So it was just sort of a, hey, uh, do you, does everybody know this is here, right? And we did get, I think we probably got two or three, um, at least a couple of applications for COAs, and I think we might have even got somebody who applied for a landmark designation as a result of that letter. So, I mean, for a relatively small amount of effort, it had a, I would say, pretty decent return, and it would seem that that would be a good idea to do on occasion.
You think she's covered the original townsite then?
I, yeah, I think so. I think it was original townsite. I don't remember, I don't remember whether it was ever a property in the original townsite or if it was just, I thought it was more than just landmarks.
It was more than landmarks. That's the letter I was discussing at the last meeting. It was landmarks, I know it was everyone in the historic districts. I think it was everyone within the original city mile, the original, their plan, community, I'm trying to see that.
Do we have, the obverse of that, do we, as a commission, have an obligation to inform the public in some manner that there are limitations that would be considered by this commission?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. It does actually tie into some of our other goals, whether it's limiting demolitions or anything else. People need to know that they potentially have historic resources.
What do we do with that convention?
What's our, what's our norm for informing the public of our limitations?
It has been essentially nothing. I mean, this outreach is, other than what happens on the public, you know, on the city's website, notice of meetings, this was one of the first times the commission sort of, you know, through staff, reached beyond our little room.
Yeah, you've basically been reactive. People make applications, and you act on that.
Assuming they know you're supposed to.
Right, which, you know, that's supposed to be triggered by the permitting process and nothing else, right? So if you submit a permit for an addition and you're, and technically, um, you would need to come for a COA, then it's supposed to get flagged by permit tech and say, "Oh, well, this is a property that needs this," and then re-apply.
And that happens, that happens.
And is there a parameter that suggests that they would know that something they're going to do to the property would require a permit in the first place?
Yeah, anything that would require like a certificate of appropriateness or a demolition, and we'll, we'll talk about that later.
You're asking about a building permit? Yeah, I mean, technically, if you ask of any kind of professional or construction professional, you hire a contractor-
What if you're doing it yourself?
Yeah, that's a great, I mean, sure, there's probably, some areas are gray, right? How much can I do? That's, that's limited, I suppose, by each individual's individual capacity to do the work confidently.
And who's basically the community? Most of the homeowners probably know they need to at least check the website to see if they need a permit.
Certainly, is there a landmark?
Yeah.
But again, that, my neighbor that I mentioned at the last meeting, they replaced their windows, they put a swamp cooler on the roof, the house is city-designated, and I don't think they did its meaning to hide it from people. I think they just forgot. I think, uh, we should send a letter out, maybe just make a policy every four or five years, sending a letter similar to the one you discussed, but I gave you a copy of. I think we should send it out just to maintain awareness. That's basic outreach we need to do.
Good point. And we have some dollars, right? I mean, it's not that we don't have a budget, but we certainly have enough to pay for some postage.
Yes.
And some of the staff time, whatever.
Some communities do, um, larger events that are for the public. When I was in Willington, they did a true grit, like every year, which was just to talk about the goals of the historic preservation, what's come forward, and, um, they threw the doors open though, they invited the public, and it ended in the evening, pretty well-attended.
The example I'm aware of too is a neighborhood I used to live in that had a very large, very active, like five-hundred-and-three neighborhood orientation. They collaborated with the city, um, historic preservation staff to, essentially two workshops, yeah, yeah. They would, you know, use their, use their reach and find craftsmen and experts and hold workshops on, you know, how do you restore your own-
It's true, that was a big part of the, yeah.
What do you need a COA for? How do you get a COA? So, you know, if, and I don't know that HNA or similar or other groups have that capacity, but if we had that community-based organizational capacity that would be far.
We do have the registered neighborhood, so I mean-
We do have the registered neighborhood. Yeah. I mean, it was essentially, in this particular case, the organization did the most civic-like work, because they had, you know, eight staff. I was on the board of directors, so.
What is a registered neighborhood?
So the city has a program that is to NLGA, and to be honest, I can't think of the-
Favorite Group Leaders Association.
And GLA.
Yeah, GLA. And they, yeah, they're promoting individual neighborhood strength by encouraging neighborhoods to get together and work together. They have a lot of good programs.
Right, right. And there is a map somewhere on our website that shows all of the registered neighborhood, covers a good portion of the city. That would be a good vehicle to reach out. Hennessy is one of them, and Westside is another, so, yeah.
But I can tell you that Hennessy has a lousy communication infrastructure. We have no good way to get together with people. And every time we have a meeting and people, they get lists of emails, somehow these things disappear. I'm not managing it, I'm not, I couldn't manage it.
The folks here, they'll keep it up or-
Internally.
No, HNA doesn't. I don't think, if you have a list, it's probably more accurate than what we have.
I guess they do.
You would think we would keep a better list, but in the neighborhood, but, um, so far, it hasn't been done.
Do you have social media presence?
As you know, there's like forty different ways to communicate socially, there's no one way that works. There is a, actually, we have our own website, but very few people know about it. We have a spot on Facebook, but no one looks at that. There's three people that always put comments on that, no one else. It's very hard to get word out. We found that for neighborhood picnics, which we have every year, and we have to have it, if you are part of a designated neighborhood, you have to have at least one neighborhood meeting a year. It's very hard to get word out to everybody.
I've never sent an email. I've got the flyers on my door, but that's it. I did not know about the, I know, the Neighborhood Association actually literally goes around and puts it at people's doorstep. Didn't know we had a Facebook, I didn't know we had.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I've lived there for fourteen years.
There will be a newsletter again, because of the neighborhood yard sale, neighborhood picnic, month before, we tried to get the letter out, so. But that's once a year, and then we have to really marshal the troops, who's going to deliver seven hundred newsletters, you know, and try to organize that and getting people to do this block or that block. It's very difficult to get word out.
Yeah, any, any other thoughts or desires to, I mean, I guess if there's a desire to push more than just a simple outreach, then that becomes a bigger picture item to talk about.
So, let's take the two things that we talked about. What are our next steps? Staff going to come back with something on letters to people at home, to historic districts?
I would say I think that checks many of our boxes, so I would put that at the top, yeah.
And just keep thinking about this idea of gathering the community into a whole deal of us.
Yeah, council does a couple of things. They do the Coffeywood Council every month, and then the mayor does, the mayor and vice-mayor make, they make a specific subject, and they meet quarterly with the community. I've gone to a couple, it's home transportation, homelessness, um, there's been a few of those. And that's a much bigger audience. In fact, they have in this conference room down here, so.
Let's make a suggestion. We've got all this other stuff that we're talking about. When we begin to really talk more about each piece, right, as the year progresses, maybe it's an opportunity to say, "Hey, we're really thinking about the preservation plan, and we're going to have, you know, two or three open sessions with a couple of commissioners. If you want to talk about a preservation plan, come down, you know, and say this."
In fact, maybe John Furt could write it down on the board, so I don't forget these two things. But that's just me.
I had three other thoughts for community outreach, walking in, same community outreach, I was trying to think of topics for this. One is the St. Brandon Historical Society had had, and still periodically you can find pamphlets that are sort of like walking tours, just listing a number of houses on the east side and west side and talking about them. And I haven't seen them lately, I don't know if you've seen those. They've been around for fifteen years, but less and less, the more time goes on. And I don't know how the St. Brandon Historical Society is funded, is that just a volunteer organization, what they're, you know, but, but those pamphlets would be nice to be printed up and distributed again, just to raise awareness of historical homes. And, um, I would love to see a little plexiglass little just holder like they have at a lot of the county parks, you know, you can slap it open, so you, ringers get in there, pull one out, and you could put one in Thomason Park and one in Collier Park. People would just walk by and say, "Oh, look at this," and pull it out, and they can walk around. And so that's relatively cheap. It's not directly the Preservation Commission, uh, but it is historic awareness in our neighborhood. So that was one thought. The other thought was the letter, another thought was Historic Preservation Month coming up, um, at the retreat, or at the Saving Places Conference. One great idea I heard, now this may not work for us, but I thought it was a really neat idea, but it is labor-intensive. I forget which community coordinated with the school district, and they had art students in middle school draw a historic home or event in their town, whatever they wanted that looked historic. And then they had a contest, who had the best drawings? And they posted them in the library, and people could, going to the library could vote, just like you can vote on a pizza, you run away out. And then the next year, they took these drawings, they did it again for the middle school the following year, but subsequent years, the elementary school kids got the crayon in the drawings, and then you got to vote for which is the best colored drawing. So this, this was coordinated with the school district, a lot of the energy came from the art departments of the schools, and it got families, mostly through the kids, involved in just the historic aspect of the town. It's a lot of work, but I thought that was a great idea, especially since it harnesses other resources.
So that's something to consider for twenty-four or twenty-five.
Yeah, that's a big project for some other year.
That's a big undertaking.
And then the third, the final thing I was thinking of, if we want to get in the newspaper for, and just say, "Hey, we're here." One thing we could do, and this is something, I don't think, I don't know if it's ever been done, um, we could propose landmark designation for the Tower of Compassion, which just turned fifty years old. And we could call Times Call and say, "We're going to put this disc on the Tower of Compassion and get on the paper," and that would raise awareness. It's a city-owned, uh, building, it certainly is a landmark, it's certainly historical, and it meets criteria. I don't know who would propose it if it's a city building. Could we propose it and then designate it, and then tell the city, and, but that's just another way we could get in the paper and raise awareness. So those are just some thoughts I had coming into it.
I think it's fifty years old.
It's just terrific, yeah, it's in the paper.
Yeah, I just forgot about that, yeah.
Cool, all right. Well, uh, I want to keep us rolling on everything we have. Any other, those are great ideas, any others before we move on? Okay, so, uh, this notion of, uh, the certificate of merit, and we had some discussion during a request for landmark, uh, status of a home, of whether or not there could be a, an alternative to landmarking that still provided some sort of acknowledgement to a homeowner or building owner of value, that, a property that wasn't necessarily a hundred percent worthy, if you want to call it that, of landmark status.
I'm calling that landmark light.
So, at least in the particular instance that sort of started this, there were, the commission was not unanimous in its, um, uh, ruling on a landmark, right? So there were some, there was a property that was sort of borderline, and there were a few things that some of the commissioners didn't feel like were, made it worthy of landmarking, and, but there was a discussion of, well, exterior improvements.
That's one way to maybe help control the development. Would that be enough of a carrot to maybe have people sign on? Another thought is, could we, would this-
I don't think that's our commission. We don't get permits, so that would be planning and whatever that is.
Right, but, but permit fees are waived right now, right?
I have to hold them.
No, you have to, you have to proactively apply for everything.
Okay. But could we ask if that could be part of the city financial structure, if we make a home?
Certainly talk about incentives.
Because I, is there an, is this as an incentive somehow to preserve the home without having to give it a brass plaque and saying, "This is an outstanding example in our community, da-da-da-da-da." That's one thought. The second thought I have is, you could take it, could you say, "This is a provisional landmarking. If, for example, the last house took off their vinyl siding, we could make it a landmark." And we could, we will, could we guarantee that if they met certain criteria, we would then find it landmark-worthy, then they could apply it for a landmark, then we could give them their tax benefits instead of them?
Well, we kind of already have that, right? Like, if somebody comes to us, "And I know exactly what property you're talking about, and you were right, and I voted for it anyways, and I know I shouldn't have, but you were right, and I felt that even at the time."
That's one of our two hundred revivals in this town.
First of all-
Oh, that's a lot of them.
I've waited like two years to say that. The first thing I'm going to say is that I don't think we should ever be making new rules based on, like, very few cases, right? So, did, did what happened with that one property even merit this larger conversation? I'm not sure. I think we were all just drinking COVID and it was not true. But second of all, I don't think there's any reason, like, somebody couldn't come to us and be like, "Hey, I think my house should be landmarked," and we're like, "No, take off the, you know, you don't meet the standards." Like, we've got the standards, we've got those, those rules already, right? So, so I'm not sure what we'd be changing. Right, like, except unless we're trying to find a new way to encourage people to come in and be like, "This is what sucks about your house, make it back."
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a proper question, given how young all of us are, but are there properties that will age into historic landmarking?
Every day, every year. Moving target, that's fifty years, fifty years gets you-
Do we have any protocols for how to manage that? In other words, should we be proactive and manage that subject?
I mean, there are certainly, I'm sure, you know, wonderful examples of every period of the fifty years, plus or minus ten years ago, that, yes, we should probably proactively be, you know, saying, "Hey, we have a great interest in those, you know, post-war, post-World War II subdivisions. We have some very nice examples in Longmont that are somewhat unique, where, you know, every house is like tilted like twenty-five- We have some very nice examples in Longmont that are somewhat unique, where, you know, every house is like tilted like twenty-five degrees off angle. And there's like a whole block of them, and they're all still.
Do the property elders know that their properties will age into landmark?
I mean, no, because most people know all about preservation at all.
I don't think anybody considers a house built in nineteen sixty-five historically eligible. We don't think that way.
But it will be.
Everything up until nineteen seventy-three is.
Well, that's really what I'm asking, and that is, should we encourage?
That leads to the other topic that I don't know. The conservation, yeah, the survey, survey around the town. And then we know what we have. That's the point of the surveying, is that then we will know and we can then, you know, maybe ask Jennifer to send a letter to that neighborhood and say, what's the interest here in perhaps getting a district? Or, you know, that your house is now historically significant. We have a maybe a slight understanding from the survey. We'll have the general context of those houses and a sort of a windshield history of them. And here's the information that we have and some of these contractors that are interested. Or, you know, we could get a grant to hire somebody to write it on the neighborhood.
That's cool, mystery. But that's what was done with Williamsburg. Our bean was in charge of the Rockefeller Restoration. And that's something came up, that is, how far, how far into the periphery should historic designation go? Because they were transitional neighborhoods. And I think ultimately, a program was approved to create those marginal or peripheral categories. And if we have some reason to do that, maybe we should get a little aggressive with that.
Yeah.
Right, which does.
You know, there's a reason we need the agenda this way, I swear.
I'm sorry.
So this is a big one, obviously. And I think we can swing back at the end and kind of summarize some of our thoughts and where we're gonna head. But just in the interest of making sure we covered everything. So, yeah, preservation plan, I mean, really, survey plan, preservation plan, bigger, a bigger project. But I would really like to figure out a way for us to get some real progress towards making these two things happen. Because it's gonna take time and money to do that, and consultants and those sort of things have time to get that to happen. But I think we've got a plan for everything in the city. We have corridor plans and water plans, and we have, not every preservation plan.
We have a graphic plan.
So, and can I add, there might be new added urgency because of the governor's affordable housing directives that he has passed down.
Oh, did pass?
Well, no, he's announced, he still hasn't passed. I think there's still.
There's a lot of workings going on.
I'm sure. Lots of people's grandma know that one.
Yeah, and we've talked, I mean, we've talked very briefly about it, right? I mean, just the notion of you're allowed to do an ADU everywhere, and what does that mean in these historic neighborhoods? And the potential just.
Right.
Suit to that degree. And it doesn't have to be mutually exclusive here. My notion is that we don't need to come in here and say, we have to preserve these historic neighborhoods and somehow get around this notion of ADUs and not allow it. It's just, we really need, if this was gonna happen, we need a plan to do this right.
And a couple of the ex do actually mention historic preservation, the ADU and the inclusion of middle housing that they're saying now shall be in every district.
Is that the same thing as infill that?
I think they're still defining, defining a lot.
Yeah, none of this is solid. There's not a word in it that's gonna probably still be in the end result, but.
I'm on the northeast side and they're, it looks like they're starting to cram apartment buildings into vacant blocks. And I'm just like, ooh. My neighborhood's fifteen.
I mean, it can be, it can be done well.
Yes.
Or it can be done poorly.
Like anything, it's not the idea, it's whether it's done well or not.
We need to have some guidance as to how it can be done well.
And I think some, and I don't know if this is a separate thing, but design guidelines that we've talked about in a preservation plan, that's.
Materials. So long-term, you know, the longer piece of this is the preservation plan. So what does it take to get, you know, allocation of funding? And, you know, that whole process of getting city council to say, okay, yeah, we're willing to do a preservation plan, allocate some funds, you know, have staff write an RFP and put it out there. What does all that take?
Generally, it's part of our budget process where we can put that in. And then we ask for funding, it's part of the budget. So that's normally how it happened now. They've, the city has done some things as far as freeing up the amount of when you have to go out through an RFP. And I think I've mentioned at other commission meetings that we have been able to hire additional planning staff contract. So I guess my first step would be throw it to them and say, what would it take to do this process? Or else it would be, well, they're actually consultants, two staff. That would be already kind of part of our budget, is I guess what I'm saying. If it's a big number and a big effort, then we go into the budget year, which, believe it or not, is starting real soon for next year. So there isn't anything specifically about this in this year's budget, but potentially.
What's your, what do you consider a big, like, what would you have to go out to RFP for?
I believe right now, anything under a hundred grand. So, which isn't a lot anymore.
I was thinking half a million.
For a preservation plan?
Same, yeah, thirty to fifty.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck with that these days. I mean, yeah, ten years ago, yes, absolutely.
Discuss, if you have one.
No, but we can probably make some calls if you want.
Yeah, yeah. How much cost? I don't know what they paid. I think they hired a consultant to do this.
I think they did.
Well, they also got a grant from SHF.
And that was gonna be my other question. If you are applying for grants, is there a city process or can you just apply and then go to council and be like, we got this money?
That's how it works. You have to go to council to accept the grant, not to apply for the grant. So I've never seen them turn it down.
No. I know Tataka. I don't know Stan Lawson. Not sure where they're from.
I know I heard St. Lawson.
They write all the codes, zoning codes for half the area.
They say they're landscape, architecture, planning, resort design.
That kind of seems too explicit, actually.
You know. Yeah, so they got an SHF grant probably, and it looks like they have a park service grant.
The survey would happen first, I would assume, which would identify resources. And then we will do a cultural plan, so they have to go hand in hand.
Well, so a survey plan is different than surveying. So a survey plan kind of does an overall context of the whole area that you want to survey. And then lets you know, like, what you're probably gonna have to do the most research on. If there's a specific type of building that you want, or, you know, if there's a commercial area, or if, you know, it's just housing, and so you, there's a certain style of housing. That should be, you know, really honed in on. And you can do sort of a windshield, they'll do like a windshield identification of the whole area. Or if it's like a whole city, and they'll prioritize areas for you of like, okay, well, this, this area is, you know, older, plus it seems to be a transitional, you know, area of the city. So we probably want to get in there as soon as possible to get that surveyed before people are, you know, wiping buildings off. Scraping out buildings. So they'll do that sort of identification for you, and then give you a plan of how to survey. So, you know, which, which areas to prioritize. Because typically, you know, unless you're, you've been given five million bucks, you're not gonna be able to survey the whole of Longmont, you're gonna want to chunk it out.
Wouldn't that have been done when they did that? It was years ago. Now I can't remember, but when they were coming up with the plans for the different sections of town. I mean, wasn't that, they went out and surveyed?
There's that one paragraph in two hundred and fifty pages that says, historic preservation is important.
It's really nice. It was really specific to the historic nature. It would have been nice if they would have done that.
So one thing, I'm just gonna throw this out there, just because in my past life, once upon a time, in Florida, had contracts of urban management legislation. The historic preservation element was either a required or a recommended element of the permits plan. So if that's something that maybe we should consider as part of our envision Longmont update when we do it at some point, that that's something to include.
And there has been chatter about doing an update.
I feel like we just.
I know, right?
Yeah. And the recent discussion has been, let's do the transportation plan this year. That's an amendment to a vision, so that is gonna start here shortly.
Would somebody like Carl McWilliams do a survey plan, or is he just surveying?
I'd do a plan, probably. But I would talk to Jenny. Have you talked to Jenny yet at the historic fund?
Yeah, I will get up, okay.
She's a, or the survey specialist for the fund. And so she can, you know, kind of guide you as to how, you know, how you might want to put out an RFP or just get some qualified people. She can give you a list of people that have done survey plans in the past. She cannot give you a recommendation, that's a void. But she neutrally tell you who has done it.
Good ballpark number, you know, from your experience.
Well, it depends how big you want to go. Like, if you want to do the whole city, I mean, you're probably looking at the, yeah, like fifty to so, five-ish range there. But if you're, yeah, yeah, if you're just talking about, you know, if we want to focus on like half the city or the core of the city versus kind of the new growth areas, there's a different, a couple different ways to chunk it out.
I just looked at the population of Longmont in nineteen seventy, it was twenty-three thousand. We're now a hundred and two thousand, so you're talking about, and this is since nineteen seventy, the amount of area that's eligible for landmarking. Can you imagine since nineteen, so?
Right, to your point, I mean, if the survey includes every, you know, international-style house, you know, in town, it's gonna be massive, right? But there's also a, you know, even in one of the documents, I read too much. There's a little nugget that says, word of significance from eighteen fifty to eight to nineteen fifty-six or something like that.
I mean, so, yeah, I mean, again, it depends how you want to do it. There's ways to do it, like our, our commercial district downtown, so it's not necessarily age. It's, you know, the commercial factor of that, of our main street. But there's some things that are off, off main street because they're also commercial and it's not a type of building specifically. It's the use of the building. You know, so it could be that, you know, if we wanted to look at, like I said, like, you know, post-World War II, you know, subdivisions that arose in the nineteen fifties when everybody's kind of helping war and it's a nice suburban lawn.
Are there, are there subdivisions that should be looked at as separate entities?
Yeah, so that would be like a district. So like, you know, like I said, there's kind of those, that division where all the houses are like off twenty-five degrees. You know, you would go, you would look in that area and you would say, okay, well, you know, we can see where that subdivision was. And that would, that would be a district. Probably one of those houses individually would not be significant, but due to the integrity of those four blocks, that's a district and that's significant and is contributing to that district.
Hey, that flows us into our next agenda, Jennifer.
I was gonna ask before you do that, do you think the Disco McDenver project would be a good model? Because they've been doing like these massive surveys for years. But I also know it's kind of survey light because they have a.
I mean, you guys started somewhere, though.
Right.
And it's volunteer-driven, then they have, they have a, you know, kind of like an iPad format set up where they go out in small groups and, you know, they take a picture with it and they fill out a form while they're standing right there doing it. So they have project leaders, but they're mostly using volunteers and, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants, if there's somebody to lead that.
I can't tell you how many times, like, I wish I could just like win the lottery and then I would just like write the preservation plan. Put a bunch of crap on the roster and just do that stuff.
Well, sometimes if you want to work nice. Right. So before we move on to.
The city of Denver.
Disco Denver?
Disco Denver.
Discover it.
It's kind of in conjunction with Historic Denver?
I think so.
Yeah, they're, they're doing, Historic Denver is doing the survey work. So they're, they got the grant to do it with their volunteer groups. But, yeah, it's, hopefully eventually in conjunction with the city of Denver and the whole city, you know, that's the goal.
Do they have criteria that would be useful to us?
I mean, it's just, it's general, it's just a general survey form of like, here's a picture, here's the address, here's a brief description, you know, what style is it? Is it kind of intact or not? I haven't looked at the survey form in a long time, so, but it's very, it's something that essentially anybody could fill out while standing there without like a huge, you know, they don't have a degree in preservation or anything, they just have an interest.
And they've also gotten a lot of funding from SHF, clearly, like they continuously got that. So, and that's part of it for me the most.
Those grants are rolling, right? I mean, we had a preservation before, that there's some money available.
Yeah.
I have the impression when we were reading through different preservation plans, Boulder applies every single funding cycle for surveys. That's just part of their policy. And they are just chipping away slowly at the whole city, and I think that's what we need to do. We are so far behind the eight ball. And I know we talked about getting one application in and we can understaff, but I think we have to make that a priority. Every single funding cycle, we should be getting money for surveys, because it sounds like it's non-competitive even.
Some of them are.
Well, the, the survey plan grant is non-competitive. But then if you want to come in for the actual survey work, then you have to come in to the competitive round.
And I don't think Boulder necessarily applies every year for SHF, but I think they do for CLG. And those are smaller, but they're.
Easier.
They are a lot easier, yeah. They're still competitive. The, it takes more work to write these grants than it feels like. And some of us on the commission can't volunteer to help.
Thank you very much.
And the last time there was a, yeah. And there was a staff member, you know, Jade did put one in and it, it didn't go forward. And I think if she was still here, that would have been a wonderful learning opportunity about, you know, what to do better in the future. But that's just another.
Yeah, once you've got the system down, I mean, you just change the address, you change the date, hand it in again.
And we could provide.
Can't be that simple.
I mean, we could pass up what else and come in that round.
But we would get better at it in practice and it wouldn't take as much time of practice.
So anybody who writes a good grant, potentially?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't. Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, I mean, I think it would have to be submitted by the city, by the CLG or us, I guess.
We have a citywide grant writer.
Yeah, no, anybody, it doesn't have to be like somebody.
So if we can come out of this with a, with a, with the idea that we want, that we want to, A, submit, we want to get in front of the city council with a budget request for some dollars for surveying in this cycle.
Okay.
And, and with a note that we can submit a direct request to the state historic fund that's non-competitive, right? So then if this is still true from before, it's fifteen thousand dollar amount, right? So we should be able to get fifteen grand from the state and let's get, make that very, start this survey plan and get some kind of volume in this calendar year.
Good.
So twenty twenty-four budget request plus CLG grant? SHF and CLG are different.
Yeah.
Yes, and CLG is done for this year, those were due in January.
So twenty twenty-four.
CLG is what?
That's right, that's right. We're the first.
Yes.
Death.
Number one.
What are we? All right, so now we're, we're, we're just being, oh, that's perfect, we are perfect. I made little time signature reservations on my, we are exactly.
We did notice there isn't a biological break in our agendas.
That is true.
I did have a whole.
You have a hundred and fifty here.
And I'm the backup.
So I thought, I thought we would hit this, unless anybody's dying, we would get this, wrap up before we die, they could still have a listen.
Well, this is my item and it came from Rick because there has been some issues. I think raised primarily from Hena that we went through, we did a citywide rezoning when we adopted our new land development code and that made some subtle changes to that SF one district, I think it was, primarily about architectural compatibility. So there was some concern from Hena that how do we restore that? So there's these two different ordinances and they're very similar in a lot of ways and they've recently asked about our conservation overlay that we have in the code. And that's different than designating a historic district and I wanted to kind of show the differences here. They're both part of the code, one's part of the land development code, but the conservation overlay is kind of a wide net. It doesn't necessarily say it has to have X amount of historic resources. It could be any kind of community, oh, cool. Yeah, I guess I can't take notes, I'm just going over here, but, so it could be anything that makes that neighborhood unique. And the code allows for adoption of that overlay district. It's, I've been communicating a little bit with Rick because we'd never used this district in the history of Longmont. It's always been a part of our code. When we did the rewrite of the land development code, we didn't touch this part, unfortunately, because they felt, oh geez, we're not going to get through, we're not going to get through the project if we delve into this. So it's never been used, so there's a little bit of question of how you actually implement it. But it says if you're part of that neighborhood, NGLA, which now I forgot.
Neighborhood leaders association.
If you have a registered neighborhood with the city of Longmont, you go to the city council, council says, okay, go forward and try and pull together a conservation overlay. It means all the uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning stay the same, you can't change that. But you are allowed to provide some flexibility in setback requirements, height requirements, landscaping and architectural standards to stay within the context of whatever is defined as unique in that neighborhood. So if the setbacks are kind of all over the place, you have some flexibility to move your front setbacks in and out. And then if the neighborhood wants to go so far, specific design guidelines, you're, you're able to draft those and get those adopted as a part of this overlay district. With, as you know, with a historic district, it's really about how do you enhance and preserve the historic resources that are in that defined area. So I guess I look at it as those are very specific requirements in order to do that. Any change then requires a certificate of appropriateness in a landmark or a historic district and that becomes your purview. The historic preservation reviews all those things. Design standards are essential.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Is that also for non-designated homes if you're in the city district?
There are none, yeah.
Either you're in a district or you're a landmark.
So if you're not a landmark home, but you're in a district, you would still have to come to the HPC for changes on your house?
Yeah.
Even if you're not really contributing structure?
Well, then we get into the, what's administrative. Right now, there is no administrative, so even if you're a non-contributing structure, yes, I think you go before HPC.
You still have to go for every building, for every stick of wood.
You're within the lines.
I think it depends, some of it depends, though, on how the district guidelines are written too, because we, we don't have any.
We don't have any.
We don't have any, that's rhetoric.
Yeah, we don't have any locally designated districts and I've, you know, I've worked in other states with districts where, you know, essentially if you're a non-contributing structure, you, it's administrative level review and typically it's like you're not contributing, go forth and continue to not contribute. So it really depends on how you set it up.
Well, right now, ultimately, we use the Secretary of Interior standards, right? It's our design standards in a locally designated district or landmark. A lot of cities take those and say, here's how you implement them in whatever the community is and they kind of use examples, which would be really helpful for us to probably. But we have such a great commission that I think you guys know what meets that standard or not. But those are basically the differences. So we've never done a conservation overlay, but it's really for a different purpose. It's something that is maybe not defined as being historic resources that need to be preserved.
Or back row.
Yeah, and I think if somebody mentioned, you know, a post-war subdivision that has some unique setbacks, kind of a, you know, I guess, part of the history of we need to house soldiers coming back and this is how it was some of the first, you know, wide-scale single-family designing construction, so maybe that would be a designation. Now, to speak specifically to the Hena area, I think one thing that we don't necessarily need the conservation overlay in that the majority of that district, that neighborhood, is within the original city town site. So I think there are some things that we can do to kind of, they feel they're unwhole at this point, but to maybe make them whole.
I can tell you, we're, I've been encouraging some of the neighborhood leaders to pursue a conservation overlay after our discussions and we are going that way. I think you'll be getting a letter in the next week or two in fact saying, start the process, it looks like it starts with a formal request from the group leader, which is Sharon O'Leary. And she will get a letter, is that to be to you, is that to be city council?
I don't know.
It's supposed to be a letter presented, I'll have to go back and look, but anyway.
Yeah, I've got my line in.
We would definitely go to council.
But we, ultimately it goes to council, it looks like in the cascade.
Yeah, the conservation overlay section of our code is in the packet.
Okay, great. I'll have to go through that. So we'll see, but I know there, you can actually put it to the test. I know part of the problem practically speaking with the conservation overlay, why it hasn't been used and the neighborhood has considered it in the past is it's prohibitively expensive for neighborhood volunteer organizations to, if we're going to, if there's going to be a zoning application fee. Again, this, we're pursuing this as a rezoning, but it's not exactly rezoning. Rezoning means you are changing the purpose of an area. Conservation overlay means we are preserving the purpose, so it should be treated differently fundamentally. And there, an application fee is difficult hurdle. We have to notify every household within the neighborhood and mailers are prohibitively expensive. I know this time around, we actually have, through the NGLA, they've gotten funds for one set of mailings to go to the neighborhood. So we are well on our way to.
They have a grant program that's part of the.
NGLA has a grant, annual grant program and this year we applied for money to pursue a conservation overlay and we did get it. So, but we don't have funds for an application, if there is zoning application requires a fee and I'm not sure we would have to do that with a, there's a lot of precedents we have to set, I think, because it is, when I read through it, it's been a little while since I last looked at it, but it seemed a little vague. Again, I'm not sure what we're going to need to do, but we, I think we have to find a way to make it workable because this is a neighborhood that benefited from a conservation overlay and that wants a conservation overlay. And if they haven't been able to get it yet, something in the system isn't breaking. They did approach it before, but they said we can't afford it, basically, they walked away. So that was one problem, so, anyway. But yes, you'll be getting a letter, so we can see if we can make it work.
Yep, we will learn to work.
Yes, we'll learn on the fly.
So this, so basically currently we have the code to allow for this process to happen and it's just that it's got to be, you know, population-driven, somebody's got to bring it up, right? It just hasn't happened.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest questions is, and we've had some preliminary discussions with our city attorney about it, is, yes, it does say submit a letter to start the process, but then it references you to other portions of the code that says you must have a property owner agree to a rezoning, you must have an application with a property owner.
There's no amount that I saw, maybe you saw, in the locally designated historic district, you only have to have twenty-five percent of homeowners to sign on to pursue it, which was remarkable to me, it doesn't even have to be a simple majority.
The majority is necessary, so you have fifty-one percent to approve, so you need.
For which?
For both, for both.
It does say or.
It does say or.
A letter from a registered neighborhood group requesting the district zoning or four areas without a registered neighborhood group written evidence that more than fifty percent.
Yeah.
So if you have a, if you have a registered neighborhood group, there's nothing about fifty percent.
Yeah, for conservation.
For conservation.
Yeah, as for historic district, yeah, it's all over the threshold to initiate higher to, but then to actually get it approved is higher.
From what I was reading of the conservation overlay, we need all the criteria in the east side neighborhood already, except for the formal request and the comments that this is a rezoning, so then we have to go through the rezoning procedure, but it's not a true rezoning, it's following a rezoning procedure, but there can be exceptions made, I presume, for, like I said, the fees. Do we have to notify people a thousand feet on each side of the area to be rezoned when we're not really changing anything? Well, if you were truly rezoning for a different purpose, that would make sense. If we're trying to preserve, do we have to come up with money for those folks? And I don't think the neighborhood has money for all of that now. See what I'm saying? So there are some differences that, and, but it's not hammered out in the wording from what I've read, maybe you've read otherwise, but we'll, we'll work through it and see if we can make it work.
Do you know what they want to do?
What they want to do?
Why aren't they?
Well, I think we're just trying to cover the single family, we don't want to go to the mixed-use development part of the neighborhood because that would make it too complicated. Just want to take that part that is a single-family zone and add the conservation overlay with the design standards. We had design standards until we had the first envisioned Longmont revamp and then they all disappeared and there are some homes that have been built that don't quite meet the criteria. And there's also, the density is an issue and again, pollus is making it even more of an issue. That, that wonderful home you designed, you built, you designed a beautiful home for two tiny lots and that's been quite a bit of conversation of what we should do. You know, there is information in the conservation overlay about setback and it says any building size can be, should be between fifty and a hundred and twenty-five percent of the size of homes on that block or facing across the street, so it would be compatible, which sort of makes sense, except it doesn't make sense in our neighborhood because there's such heterogeneity in lot size. One lot will be twice the size of another one right next door to it. And we have some homes that, for example, the home that you designed, Steve, would fit that criteria, but it doesn't fit the lot and that takes away from the overall character of the neighborhood.
So I do want to interject because I think that comes up a lot fairly or unfairly. That house and that design came before this commission. And we.
Which house were we talking about?
Sorry.
Four twenty-six Emery. It's, it's a well-designed home, it meets all the criteria, so the criteria are wrong, is what I'm saying.
I don't think that, well, I think.
In that the neighborhood doesn't feel the same, if we were to, especially if we were to have house after house like that, we wouldn't even have yards, we would have alleys between the houses.
This is prior to.
It's a beautiful home, it's well-designed, it meets the criteria very well, from the front, you can't even tell there's an addition that looks great.
Yeah, I think there are times that Hena wants a museum exhibit instead of a living neighborhood that changes.
Well, I don't know about that.
That is my.
Well, there is no Hena, there's individuals, right? And we're, the whole spec. But I think the neighborhood is pretty accepting of accessory dwelling units. We have, in fact, I know they've submitted guidelines for planning about, you know, you, they, they apparently, someone in planning came back and said, look, you don't like anything we're sending you. And they said, well, what, what do you want? We actually, the neighborhood sent guidelines for ADUs, what we like. And they sent along those guidelines, we've had no qualms. So infill is not, we realize it's coming, there's a lot of pressure and it's not a bad thing per se. Change is definitely necessary, but again, the density, it has to be managed so that the character of the neighborhood isn't lost and the character of the neighborhood isn't defined just by the front of the house. Anyway, so, so we're talking, this is one reason why the letter hasn't gone out yet, we're actively discussing do requests footprints be a certain percentage of the overall lot size or not, as well as in a restriction in addition to just the setbacks. So, and I could go into more of that if you want, but we've got time to mix and other things to discuss, I could discuss it with you later as well. But yes, we are going to pursue the conservation overlay, which actually sounds easier than becoming a locally designated historic district. Again, we don't have to have a certain percentage of buying, but they're, they're definitely difficult.
Could we get copies of the community submitted ADU design guidelines? I don't think I've seen that, or are they?
Bob McClosman handed them out at a couple meetings ago.
And being specific only, in fact, I could. I, we would go way off our agenda, but I can.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be, and maybe it's something I should have.
They turned it into council, basically.
Okay.
I can get another copy.
I don't think it was just specific ADUs, as I remember.
I think it was requested for ADUs and I believe it was specific for ADUs, but again, it's just compatible architecture and we define that for other homes too.
Yeah.
Yes, I think they did.
We can send it out.
Any other thoughts or comments on the conservation overlay, historic district? So the last, well, okay, so then we have an item, a place order for state programs, I think this was something that you brought up, about other.
Well, I had a reaction from the conference that we went to. I heard a lot about state programs that are, programs that are assistance, like the FASAD program. And so I was just curious whether staff had compiled any kind of a compilation of what was available in grants from the state or the city that involved historic preservation and if there was anything we could do as far as getting the money or getting programs. And this, I guess it kind of depends whether the city wants to go in the direction of some of the programs or not. So it kind of has to be a conversation between the, between you guys and us. So, it kinda has to be a conversation between the, between you guys and us.
So, I do, I do know the LPTA works with proprietors to, to facade grants. For the main street area.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the main street area. So, that is one.
Yeah, I think, rather than just pursue grants that are out there, we'd wanna make sure we implement what we decide here, so, and I think we know what those are. It's the CLG and the. CLG, CLG is Certified Local Government, which means we are a historic preservation code and therefore, there are certain funds that are available to us.
And we do a job?
We have in the past.
Okay, so, what was the second one?
State Historic Fund.
Is what we're talking about, applying for, for a certain.
Yeah, and I don't know if there were other things that maybe you saw that say, "Hey, that's."
You know, I'm just looking for a book.
Looking for a booklet.
Jennifer sent a wonderful book to us on the email. We're getting physical copies eventually, is that correct?
I've requested physical copies.
I spoke to a planner from Littleton, a friend of mine that I saw at the conference, and she mentioned this book, and I mentioned it to Jennifer, and she sent in an email.
Oh, yeah.
A copy of that. If you read that, it's like 250 pages. It's a very comprehensive book on CLGs and how they work and who are available. So, I would recommend looking at that. I've worked upon.
For a specific project, but it was still working order, my staffers and me just developed a whole list of stuff available in the state. I'm gonna email it to you two right now, so we can have it in the case that we need it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And generally speaking, it's better to have a project and pursue funding for that project, and not pursue funding and then find a project for that funding. So, yes, there's lots of grants and programs and stuff out there, and, but, it's better for us to prioritize what projects we want funded, and then go find that funding, applying to every funding source so we can make a.
But it's still.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely, we're having the information, so if we find something that works, then we have the.
Okay, so, is there anything else? I'm sorry. If commissioners wanna throw out their more ideas and thoughts about any we ought to be talking about over the course of next year, before we jump there. Before we take a break, then we jump out.
I had, I had mentioned it, and I recognize that this full agenda, we probably weren't gonna get to it, but I mentioned the, the follow-up, what the plan is with respect to the Rainery and Sugar.
Oh.
I did hear a presentation from the college, which was great, but I don't know how that, a lot of ideas there, and I don't know how that fits in with what you're thinking about, and I have no idea what the timeline is of this assignment. Five years out, or not even really to talk about it, but I just.
We're close. Yeah, so we just got, in fact, not yet, but I think in the next week, we will have kind of our final draft from Stantec, who is the consultant, on that, that basically goes through the recommended process and code changes in order to see historic preservation and redevelopment of that Sugar Mill area. So, we're close. It was delayed, and partially, it's kind of ironic, is that we started the process in order to get interest in folks taking on the Sugar Mill and preserving it, moving it forward. And then, lo and behold, we end up with three or four developers that are looking at doing things in the area. So, as soon as we would lay down an idea, they'd say, "Yeah, we're thinking this." So, it's, it's kind of been delayed from where we thought it was. But we should have a draft, we gotta vet it internally, and again, meet with the folks that are working on properties in the area, and then we'll do a presentation with HBC, Planning Commission, City Council, basically, so.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, I remember you bringing that up, but, yeah.
Yeah, I would say, you know, if we can have just a, I know we don't necessarily have any jurisdiction, per se, in a lot of these areas, but if there is, you know, especially if we have a light in our agenda, if there's an opportunity to get an update on what's happening in these areas that do have some historic preservation value, or something that might be happening downtown, or, you know, just being made aware of any potential impacts to historic properties in the city, it'd be nice if they, if we just stayed in the loop.
Right, right.
And I have, as Kimberly's involved me, in talking with folks who are interested in different downtown buildings, I have advised that, hey, they, they should do a, an informational presentation about, to this commission about what they're looking to do, so.
Are there any mandatory criteria to do?
Unless, unless it's a landmark, it's not a landmark, yeah. So, and a lot of these properties aren't landmarked already, so.
And that's part of, I mean, this is part of what we've talked about in terms of this conservation overlay, and it's, you know, local historic districts. It could be if we decided to make these local historic districts, right? But that would take somebody putting forth that proposal.
Short of making them historic districts, or adding to historic districts, can't we generate any criteria for extracting a particular property from a set of properties, because the set, the block, whatever it is, has some resonance that should be looked at?
What do you mean? Sorry, what do you mean extracted? You mean individually listed versus a district?
No, I don't necessarily mean individually listed.
What I mean is, criteria for whether a block unit that has some preservation value can have part of the units or one of the units extracted from it without notice.
What, what do you mean by extracted from?
Oh, demolished, okay.
Yes, demolition, yes, we're getting to that stuff.
We're next, something.
Thanks for setting those up.
Second half.
Sorry about that.
It is next.
All right, so, let's take five.
I thought what I'd do is, I have a few slides from our presentation back on August 16th that we did at our work session with city council, just to kind of remind some of you, and unfortunately Herb, I think was the only one that wasn't there, you were with us right though, so. So, this'll be new for Herb, but then, I just wanna point out that the demolition requirements are proactive, and we've talked a little bit about people coming in with their application, but in this case, we wanna get in front of somebody taking out a potentially future historic property, and they live outside of landmarks and districts. So, it's a little bit unique in that all of our requirements are, if you're a local landmark or a local district, however, demolition goes a little bit further. So, that's where we got into some legal issues that we discussed with the council. It's definitely an HBC priority, I'm not sure why I put it in there, but what is appropriate criteria and review process? So, I've made a draft that we'll go through. We've talked about concepts with our city attorney, but they haven't reviewed it, so I'll put that disclaimer out there, and let's, let's get going. So, first, this is probably, doesn't really need to go through, but we, we did talk about what's a federal, what's a state, what's our local requirements, just so that people, and I think this was really for our city council that didn't realize, yeah, we have federal historic districts, but they're not ours, and our code doesn't apply to them. Why do we have it? Protect historic character of the city, talks about enhancing property values and stabilizing these areas. And there's also, we get kickbacks because there are economic and financial benefits. Certainly, the activity in our downtown, a lot of it has to do with historic preservation. So, it's an economic development tool. And then, we talked about designation criteria, and there was section 2.56 that we'll get into, that says, "Council may designate a landmark with the consent of the owner if it's at least 50 years old, or is determined to have exceptional historic value." That meets one or more of the criteria. What was proposed at the time was a little bit larger change, which was add clear and definitive criteria, but this idea of a rezoning that is a historic preservation overlay, and we've talked about overlays a little bit earlier, that would make anybody who had a potential property know that, hey, I've got special rules. And that was one of the concerns that was raised, and it falls in the category of due process. We can't necessarily put rules on somebody without them being aware of it. So, that's what was proposed with this HPO. That if you go through a rezoning, you have to notify the owner, becomes an ordinance, and it gets recorded. And then, there's also additional requirements for non-conceptual designation. And then, we showed this map that shows our original town site, which is the dark blue line. I love the switcher, I don't know where you got the switchers.
No, I got, no, I got it at the store downtown that we used to be by Crackpot's. Next door, that closed.
Oh. So, that's the original town site, and then, we have these various districts that have been created that are federal districts, most recently in the downtown. But then, we have the historic Eastside and the historic Westside. That, and the Westside just barely gets outside that square mile. And then, every one of these dots is what the HBC has designated as a landmark. So, we have a lot of landmarks, we have no local districts. And I, this was certainly, yeah.
Sorry, you probably just said this, so all those little, like, brownish squares, even outside the blue, are those all those neighborhood association things?
Yes, right, exactly.
Okay.
Bomb farms, it's outside that area. But, the unique thing is, the historic Eastside is really within that blue square mile. I don't know why this was designated. I love the name planet.
Right.
Anyhow. So, then, December 1st, I had a meeting with the chairman, and, because I think both of us were realizing, I mean, bringing council along with this big thing was, was a heavy lift. And, and I think, I think there were some HBC members that maybe thought, geez, do we really need to go through this whole HPO district? So, I had a coffee.
The names of the top members?
Yeah.
Were members at the time.
Yeah, you missed out on this, but.
Hey, they didn't spell my name.
Well, I know Terry.
Right.
So, like, what is, no respect.
So, what we did is, you know, after coffee with Steve, I said, "What started it all?" Because I kind of missed out on that, and that was the concern about, we're gonna lose resources through demolition, and it kind of grew from there. So, and then, I came in as Jade was going through an amendment process, and that was really growing in scale. So, we had a meeting on December 1st, and said, "How do we reel it back in and maybe get the, more of a microscope change to affect how we do demolitions in the city?" So, I threw out a bunch of things, and then you guys kind of voted, saying what was most important to you. And.
When was most, two, the second, or three, or the third?
Everybody had three votes. So, kind of had a long discussion, but this is kind of where we fell, is demolition by neglect. That was a concern that, a neighbor just doesn't take care of his property with the intent that all, all I can do right now is demolish it. So, that shouldn't, we shouldn't allow that through our ordinance. Got four votes for that, but far and away, revise the demo requirements and the process, we all realized was a big issue. Ten votes, there are a couple of things about enforcement penalties. If there isn't a good stick, how effective are you gonna be with some of these requirements? And then, the idea of incentives not to demolish is a good concept. So, staff kind of went through, we did a draft of the ordinance. Oh, you remember this, this was the table that Brian presented.
Yeah, and then everyone's happy.
Awesome, yeah, and we pulled a few ordinances, I think we gave you Fort Collins and Lafayette. I think that was it. But if, did you pull up the ordinance now in my draft? It should be in your, it should be in your packet somewhere. It's probably in your.
Handout, I think it starts, 136?
Yeah, it's over on the left.
136?
Looked like it was in your packet right there.
Yeah, only a packet.
Sorry, on the screen.
Which one are we looking for?
Pull that. That's it, 4C, nope, nope, sorry.
It's okay.
See the word that I didn't get, 4, nope, nope, keep pulling up.
There we go.
Nope, nope.
Nope.
Actually, you did have it.
I did have it right.
PDF version, let me get back to the PDF version, it's a little hard, you let us down. There we go.
Okay, so it's an early draft, you're not gonna hurt my feelings, but yeah, keep in mind that, yeah, city attorney hasn't seen it yet. But the intent here is, we kind of reach a consensus on this first step. I'll go to council and say, "Hey, we showed you this, which, you know, there is some benefit to this, but we wanna chip it off in bite-sized pieces."
We're making a lot bigger. Come on, where are you sitting at?
There you go.
It's in your packet also, okay. Yeah, you guys do have more.
You hear something else.
All that you scrolled, all that you scrolled were, you need to.
Demolition, procedure, demolition.
Yeah, there's 256 historic.
Yeah, and anything shown in red, it aren't proposed changes, so. First is maybe trying to define what demolition is a little bit better. So, we added, partial demolition means any of the 50% or less of the exterior walls. I noticed Lafayette had some cool drawings that included, that really helps define this. Or 50%, or the roof area, or any portion of an exterior wall facing a public street.
So, it's the whole thing.
Then, we should define historic property, and I think some of these changes actually came from your red line, from a couple of years ago. I think this might be directly from that. Means local historic district or landmark, a property or structure listed on the state national register or of historic places, or any property or structure identified in architectural, cultural resource survey, and so on, so. We already defined what total demolition is, so we took that out, it's redundant.
Right, and just back to that historic property piece, that basically says that if it's, if it's a landmark, or if it's a contributing building in a district, or even identified in a reservation plan, which might come later, then it's, then it's. in a preservation plan, which might come later, then it's, then it's.
Deemed worthy.
Right, deemed worthy, right?
Right.
It's got a qualifier for it.
Right, so determined to be eligible, considered eligible, not having been nominated.
I'm not making anybody dizzy, but.
Just in that last line there, maybe just not reading slowly enough on that historic property means.
Go either.
So it says, for listed on state or federal register, if determined to be a contributing resource in the national or state register, a local historic. So that means if it shows up on a cultural resource survey, and the survey says it's contributing to the district, then it doesn't matter whether it's landmark or not, then that's qualifies for.
Within consideration?
Well, right, except we're just defining the term.
Right.
So it's where we plug in historic property.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it should probably be within.
Yeah, the last line, I think. Why is property separated from a national? Why is property separated from structure?
Is there a difference?
Yep.
It includes the site.
Yeah, I mean, something, an actual landscape.
What I was going to say is, a site without a structure may be considered historic.
Yep.
Okay, right.
Like farm property or something along those lines.
Or a palpeal.
Yep.
So is there a word here, listing or something?
It should just be within, I'm making it up here.
Okay, right.
Now I can.
All right. Took that out, it's redundant. Didn't change anything in here. It's still the same procedure for designation, didn't change anything there. Okay, I highlighted these because I know from our council liaison, he had some concerns about the percentage. So we actually say, right now, designation procedures for historic districts must include the consent of the owners at 25%. I mean, typically, I've seen 50.
That's, that's just to make the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, the approval is 51%.
Okay, right. Is there some source for those to 25?
Yeah, you can start the process if you have consent from 25%, but they won't.
Okay, maybe it's not that big of a deal now.
I don't think it's that big of a deal.
Is there a source for those two numbers? Yeah, F is 51%.
They're kind of widely used as accepted numbers. Every ordinance I've seen, I mean, for approval enactment in a district, it's either 51% or 50% plus one.
Can I make a suggestion though, that we add the word local, local historic district? Because that could be confusing, there already is a historic district, so.
Yeah, I hear you, right here.
Yeah. That's what, that's what this is really about.
Right, it is.
Will you create a local historic?
Local, long one historic district, yeah. We provide a little bit more details on design guidelines, that they have to be consistent with Secretary of Interior standards for historic properties, which will be required for all local districts.
And I want to ask the question, just because the development of design guidelines is complicated. Is it, should it be a requirement that if you want a local district, you have to have guidelines? Or could you have a local district whose guidelines are simply the Secretary of, compliance with the Secretary of Interior standards? Because that would take a pretty significant, I mean, if you're talking about cost, the cost to develop a set of architectural guidelines will be high. Is it adequate enough to, because basically, that approval is going to come back to this commission, which theoretically should be familiar with those guidelines. So is, is it necessary that someone could decide to, in addition, you know, propose guidelines, but not necessarily make it mandatory?
I thought the listing is optional.
No, it's required.
Additional guidelines?
Design guidelines are essential elements.
Additional if desired.
Shall be developed by the.
For all of this, additional guidelines are optional, but design guidelines are not.
You actually need a comma after owners. Oh, yeah, that is weird, that's weird.
It is weird, isn't it?
Well, so either way, it's unclear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing about, what I'm reading Steve is that you, basically, it's the Secretary of Interior guidelines. However, if the owners decide that they want to come up with additional guidelines, and working with the staff and others, they can do that, but that's all part of the approval process. But if they don't want to do it, they just use the. I'm not sure I agree. You said, so it says, design guidelines consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards shall be required for all districts.
That's right.
But that doesn't say that, it implies that a design guideline should need to be created.
So let's be clear, the Secretary of Interior standards are not design guidelines.
Right.
They are a set of.
Criteria.
Ten criteria that you need to apply to have appropriate preservation practices in place. So the design guidelines are going to be, do you want to allow three-story buildings in your district? Do you want to have at least 25% of the front facade of a building be brick? Do you want to allow stucco? How do you know, what do the windows need to look like? So those are designing.
Tree and there's a craftsman.
So additive, in other words, are the interior guidelines, in the guidelines we're talking about additional guidelines, or could they wind up being somewhat inconsistent?
No, you would have to make the design guidelines, which is the more specific to your neighborhood, to your district, comply with the Secretary of Interior.
So they're additive, always additive?
They'd be different for every district.
Yeah, exactly, every district would have their own, potentially, their own design guidelines.
Let's assume, second discussion, that the district doesn't want to have any additional stuff.
Then they should do conservation.
So this first sentence then.
Yeah, then they should.
Doesn't make sense, because they don't, you're saying that Secretary of Interior doesn't have guide, design guidelines, so how can design guidelines be consistent?
Because they, they have to, your design guidelines have to comply with the larger, more conceptual Secretary's.
Yes.
Secretary's standards.
They can't be the A and O.
Essentially, so the second sentence, design guidelines consistent.
Yeah, first pyramid.
The Secretary of Interior standards, which shall be required for all districts. Don't, don't go any further. Is that, oh no, is that okay, right?
That's what I was asking, additional to what?
Does that make sense by itself? Because you were talking about criteria before, it's criteria, not guidelines. And I'm just wondering, forget the second, forget everything after additional.
That last, that last, the additional guidelines bit is a little bit confusing.
I'm not talking about additional, just read the first two sentences by themselves. Are those okay?
Yeah.
Okay, then the only issue is, what if the neighborhood.
What do you mean by additional guidelines, is what I would ask.
Well, I guess the question is then, what if a neighborhood wants to do more than what the Secretary of Interior guidelines require?
But there's no requirements from the Secretary of Interior standards. They are standards that are guidelines to.
They're guiding principles.
Yes, they're guiding principles. So there's no black and white in those, the Secretary of Interior's.
You just have to be consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards. All right, so then did that whole additional guidelines is redundant?
I mean, that would be, I mean, I would suggest that maybe the additional guidelines are if you want to really get down into like percentages of, you know, brick that you want, and what type of stucco, I mean, you could get real specific if you really wanted to.
It'd fly anyway.
Nobody would approve it.
But that's, that's your problem, because I'm still wondering whether the additional guidelines are intended to be additive to the design guidelines. I mean, what are we talking about here? Design guidelines, that's, I can understand that, but additional guidelines, additional to what?
So the Secretary of Interior standard says that if you have a historic property, here are some rules for making sure that you are maintaining it as a historic property.
Right.
What we're talking about here is like, okay, so I've got these rules, if I need to replace my windows, I need to replace them in kind, right? But my neighborhood might say, you know, on top of the, the Secretary of Interior guidelines are really general, but if we're having a historic district, so we know how to treat the houses in there that are, that are already historic, wood windows for wood windows.
And why is the word desired in there?
Right, because then you could do additional rules, like, well, for new, for new construction, you're not allowed to build a 15-story, you know, modern apartment building, you can only do a, you know, four-unit craftsman styles. Right, so and then, but they would have to be consistent with what else is in there.
So I'd like to, this is all awesome, and I want to keep, but, so what I'd like to do, two things, I would like to put this on the agenda for our next actual.
Flag this one.
Right, and flag this for this discussion, because I don't want to spend the whole afternoon talking about it, but I just want to get the overview.
It is important, because it will come up in demolition too.
Yeah, so let's, let's keep rolling, but know that it will come back to this.
All right, here's 51%, I'm not going to get into that. That's when we actually approve a history. Here's other consensus, by the way, that did it. Here's the only consensus we can provide for historic preservation, we talked about a little bit earlier. That's not done? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, you should get that. All the stuff that's going to highlight it or anything.
It's all in the ordinance now, right? Right. Demolition is truly at the end, there's another percentage will pass by. Okay, so here's kind of the medium matter for demolitions. And we changed the wording on the title to review of permits for demolition, meaning partial or total, and moving of undesignated structures, so those that aren't landmarks or within a historic, local historic district. And the idea of that, I think our outside counsel was saying, you know, you're not, because they're not in a district, those folks don't necessarily know that these restrictions are on their property. So we're just hoping they come in with a permit, and we say, uh-oh, wait a minute, you have some potential, and we're going to delay your permit to demolish partially or full, until we go through a process to see if it's worthy for landmark status or within the district.
Could they have taken the property, he bought the property, without notice?
Yes. Right.
Theoretically, though, if it's a landmark, it would show on the title.
My answer is no.
Okay, yes, but not for, yeah, or so if they have to go through.
These are all designated, so.
These would be undesigned.
They're all having that.
Well, they have a right to do that. Where are you swaying with that?
I'm trying not to get too far.
Are you, are you in front about your setbacks when you buy a piece of property? I mean, there's a lot of stuff you can.
Insurance of the law is not.
Yeah.
Well, different today.
This is too major.
I'm in an RSF, so if I knew enough, I could look at the zoning code and see what the rules are. But if you have no idea that you're potentially 50 years old, and you meet some criteria, that new rules apply. So anyhow, the only reason I'm saying that is what I tried to do in this first paragraph is winnow down that 50 years old into an area, and I looked at a number of surveys that were done in the original townsite, and it referenced this period of significance for Longmont, which was 1898 to 1953. I don't really know why.
Why 53?
But it was probably a growth period for the city of Longmont.
Which works.
So it reduces now down that area of properties that potentially would have to be, go through this process if they're messing with it. It's kind of a big change, I'm hoping that legal say, oh, well, now you've reduced potential liability to the city.
Can I ask if that survey thing you looked at was written in 2003?
I looked at the individual surveys of the landmark properties.
Okay.
That's where I got it from, and it was a, it was a consistent theme. And I don't know if it was all written by the same person, but I don't know. You're asking how we define that?
Because sometimes if a period of significance goes up to the present, you just say 50 years from today, so if I wrote something for today, but then if we're having this discussion in five years or 10 years, that, yeah, that 1953.
I was wondering.
Should be a special 53.
Yeah, so just, just wondering.
Right. Are we going to have another area significant?
Yeah, because now it'd be seven years.
Right, it automatically be 20 years.
I don't like that.
Are we for two?
We're saying seven years. Historically, this.
I mean, that's, that's kind of why we use the 50 years or older, is because then you're not, yeah, it moves with, moves appropriately with the times. So then you're not having to revise this every five years, so like bump it up again to whatever date it should be.
Right, right.
Just thought.
That comes back to the possibility of sending letters out, so that every year.
Yeah, somebody knows.
Properties that become part of this, we get a letter.
Forming to, interesting, because do things become significant in one year? Possible.
Everything becomes significant within the, no, I mean, it depends on what the period of significance is, I'd say like what the determination of why this period was significant. Like if you're just talking about a building, and it's beautiful, and it's a perfect example of, you know, big craftsman architecture, and it was built in, you know, 1910, then its period of significance is 1910. It's not 10 until whenever it gets formed now, it's that year. So there's a reason for a period of significance. But as Holly said, with sort of larger periods of significance, they are required by the National Register to stop at 50, 50 years. But you would then do an update.
Right.
Or not, if you don't want.
Is there any way to argue, because this particular limit is on the original town site, that it makes sense to put a cap at the end?
So then you're saying that nothing done, nothing built from 1953 onwards is or will ever be significant?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so that's a problem.
I can think of nice buildings downtown, like Wayne Gaddis building with brick arches.
I've been in neighborhoods, those places are 50s. But if we wanted to do like historic destroyers in there, some of those are, you know, 49, 51, 53, but then how would we deal with the stuff from like 1954 or 1958? Right, like, so you might be making, we might be making neighborhoods that we already have some identification that they're probably historically significant, maybe throwing barriers in our way to create a historic district or a conservation overlay. I don't know if this applies to.
Well, this would only apply to demolition, but your point taken that we could lose resources, right?
Yes, yeah.
Another point, it says from 1898 to 1953. My house was built in 1886, there's one on the corner, 1872, the building down the street here is built in 1865, that should start with 1865, if you ask, I mean, not 1898. The only property I know of in town is 1865.
Yeah, that number came from the surveys that were done in the original townsite, the individual surveys that were done for landmarks.
My landmark is 1886, so I could. We would have used a loophole that would take out the oldest building in town.
Groups not significant.
Should serve the oldest building in town, I would think, which is 1865.
Or the approach is we can go back to the 50 years.
Yeah.
But a stronger determination criteria is within the period of, well, no, because that still.
I would think that's still in the period of significance. I don't know what makes this significant and others not significant, but if 1898 is significant, I would think 1872 would be significant.
I mean, your, your survey plan would help with that.
Yeah.
Revisit that. Why?
That's what I was wondering, whether the period of significance is defined as 1898 to 1953 or whether those two periods of time might be different.
Again, it's, it's about.
The way it's written.
I don't know why, I don't know why it starts at 1898. That seems quite late.
Yes. Can you take out the dates?
Take out 1898?
No. A period of significance has to have dates.
Significant is too wishy-washy.
Yeah.
Well, if you can't take out the dates, then period of significance has to be an accurate representation of those dates.
Your point is you take out the dates, you don't, you take out the period of significance, turn it all together.
Yeah, there's, there's no point to the period of significance because you're not stating a period.
Or 55 to 50 years prior to the present, is what I would say.
But that council's not going to have to do that, right?
Well, that's back to what the original was. And all I'm trying to do is make a stronger case to put restrictions on properties that are not part of the designation.
I'm not sure how that's stronger though.
Good.
It, it narrows.
Well, the narrower, the more you narrow the time down, the more stronger a case you'll have, but it doesn't serve the purpose.
But then it also gives free range. It's like, oh, I'm six months out of that, so I can tear my house down, it's no big deal. It's, yeah, it's tricky.
I don't sense anybody likes that.
Sorry, it's going down a flame. So I do have this, the survey plan would help determine. Right. It seems like we need to revisit and actually have a period of significance.
Saying, tell council to approve some dollars on the survey and then we can fix this.
We'll push this out further.
No, it's not.
It should be done right. All right. So then we had the language before that outside the original city subdivision, and maybe this should be the answer. And it's identified in Architectural Cultural Resource Survey, District Nomination, Top to Preservation Plan, Consider Eligible for Designation, then those also are captured in the demolition requirements. So the original town site, well, we can drop the area of significance. We could just go with paragraph two. It's been identified somehow.
Is the word considered, well, no. In other words, is there some basis for these, the word considered? Considered by where? Is there a document?
By any of these documents? Is that where, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, considered eligible, that's fine.
Yeah, it would be defined written in any of these documents. They need a number of criteria.
Oh, are they eligible? That's pretty severe.
Just follow up on Herb's point. You're not talking about a property or structure that is eligible? Just one that, or that has been designated. You're talking about one that's considered eligible, which could, and that's three, why it's, there's been no designation, they've never applied for it, but it's considered eligible. I think that's.
Your research.
Yeah, that, that's a legal, that's a legal designation at the federal listing. Not, not necessarily at that local level. So we have literally hundreds of thousands of eligible properties in our database that have never been listed to the National or State Register as historic places.
But you have to consider them.
What kind of properties that are considered eligible under this, this idea would come into, come into the demolition rule. And again, I'm going to suggest that we broaden out and get, and save the super detail for the next commission hearing because we've got limited amount of time and I want to at least get through the whole of what was.
And we can certainly bring that.
It says at the end of the paragraph A, and that meet the following criteria. You mean meet any of the following criteria, not all of the following criteria, right?
The way it's written, it's all.
Have to meet all of those. Okay.
I definitely want to bring this back to.
Yeah, yeah, no, the point of this is to get a broad, the point of this time here today is to get a broad sense, get refreshed so that we can all have some thoughts about what we want to dive into in the next commission meeting, which is only, whatever.
Next week.
So it should remain fresh, but I want to make sure we have looked at the whole so that everybody's got thoughts about what they want to bring back.
I'm missing a T. Missing a T in paragraphs of paragraph two.
That's okay though. It's picked up right there.
Good, all right. Can't be rehabilitated. Now, design guidelines. What I've read in some of these other codes is that you can't just demolish a piece of ground without a plan of what you're going to replace it with. And that plan should meet the design guidelines. So that's kind of a big question for me. Does it even make sense for the city to promulgate design guidelines? If, if they're going to be different in all cases? I've attempted to do that here.
I mean, there can, again, it's kind of a, you know, a layered system. Like the city can have some design guidelines, some general design guidelines. And then each neighborhood would have that additional piece of their own, their own design guidelines to add onto that.
But it would always be additional.
Right.
Which exists now. The current code has certain architectural guidelines for various neighborhoods that get specific, you know, it's a percentage of drill and all kinds of stuff. But most of the time it's there.
Just applying the speed.
They don't, they don't always work the way you would have intended them to work.
Talk about that blue house.
So, and we do have a section that talks about architectural, based on types of structure throughout the city. And what I was thinking here is we could embed those general design guidelines within that section of the Land Development Code that says for properties within the historic, you know, one-mile town site, these rules shall apply. Right. Okay, I highlighted some of these timeframes are, oh, 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 oh. So the process now, here's kind of a big change. Basically says the staff lay is on and a council member appointed by the council shall review all demo that meets these criteria. Not, not a great system for anybody involved. So what we changed that to is the staff lay is on and a designated chair of the HPC or their designee will meet and do the initial review of demolition permits and make a decision. Most codes do say 10 business days. We're kind of playing with, you know, reasonable timeframe to give us some flexibility. But I think if it's a matter of three people sitting down or two people sitting down and reviewing it, we probably could stick to the 10 business days. And they basically decide whether there is something worthy of protection, which would then kick it to the full board to review the application.
And I would guess most of these are going to be really obvious, really quickly.
Unless it's very minor demo of a rear, of something of a rear. But yeah, anything that's noticeable, I think you'll be kicking to the historic preservation. I highlighted the timeframe of when we have to have that hearing. Just I want to look at, see if we're able to do that with our notice requirements. But basically then it goes to the HPC and you decide whether the permit should be granted or not. And the way I had it written that if not, it goes directly to city council, basically. Now, I guess the question here is we could just send them regardless to city council. I don't know that they would say, oh, you shouldn't have granted that demolition permit for, for that. So I, I don't think that's an issue. And instead I probably would add that the property owner could appeal, but I can't imagine somebody appealing the fact that you approved the permit. So, yeah, but right now it's, if you deny it, it goes to city council. If you approve it, it's done.
The owner's consent there is predicated on the owner having had notice of the potential limitation when he or she bought the property, right?
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, this says it could be designated a landmark without the consent of the owner, which means that goes to another section that says it's so historically significant, there's a process to bring it.
Wouldn't that be illegal taking?
Well, we're supposed to argue, but we have a set, we have code language to that. That's in, in existing order.
It's in the code right now. And it's in most of these codes, but we certainly heard that term come up.
Sounds like a problem. I'm not an expert in this particular area, but that sounds like a problem. If there was no notice, and notice is of two kinds in this situation. It's actual notice or what we call constructive notice. That is, the, the person taking the property have, would, would know if they had done reasonable research, given all the facts and circumstances. Then they would have constructive notice, whether they had actual notice or not. But if the situation here is neither actual nor constructive notice, that's a problem.
That's why it rarely ever happens.
That's good.
I, I mean, sometimes, yeah. Sometimes you have to do a change.
That's why I think, well, you erased everything.
I wrote it down.
We talked early on about sending out notices.
Yeah, exactly. That's why that notification piece is so.
It becomes really vital here. You're, you're absolutely right.
And there's other code changes that occur that everyone who is a property owner is affected by. And so this would just be a question presuming changes across the board, something you all do.
Division 111 did exactly that.
Exactly.
It's on the entire city.
That's right.
I don't remember getting a notice on that.
No, no.
Some of those kinds of things, which are in the nature of public interest are one thing. So you can post acquisition, have some limitations on your property because of public interest concerns. This is not.
I agree with you very much. Why would we have a historic preservation commission if it's not of public interest?
Well, it's a.
We're just kind of the minions.
Yeah, we did get kicked out of the tournament ten minutes and it proved that they are very strict about this.
So we have to. That little scanner didn't work, so we're stuck here.
We've never been here. You missed a little drama.
So this is demolition by neglect. And we actually were helped by outside counsel to draft this language. The city intends to preserve from deliberate inadvertent neglect the exterior portions of designated properties and all interior portions thereof that, I guess, structurally may harm the, or speed up the deterioration. No owner less than occupant of any historically designated property. Again, now we're saying designated properties and not anything else. Right.
And that what?
So there is notice.
Yes. And then enforcement penalties, which we didn't have before. This kicks you into another section of the code that basically says if you violate the, this section of the code, you are potentially subject to a $500 fine, 90 days in jail. It's not great, but we also added in, you could also be blacklisted as far as permits for a period of time. It's seen in other codes.
Some of them are for five years.
Some live for five years. Yes. I think just an internal discussion with that, maybe that was.
No, I think that, that piece is more important than the five.
Yeah, I think so.
Especially five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I know. I've never seen anybody go to jail for anything like this either, so.
I think you also have to have them like demolish the site, sitting there for five years and they're going to have to deal with their own.
So that's it. That's where we are, but I know you're seeing it for the first time and we can discuss it. Continue the discussion.
All right, well, thank you. I think we're, it feels like we are making some progress. So we'll take a few minutes that we have left till we get marshaled out of here. So as a recap for action items, so we'll maybe go in reverse order here. So we are going to have this demolition ordinance on our, what is it, the 6th? On the agenda for the 6th. So we'll dive in some more deep discussions of some of the items that we had to kind of gloss over. I, I do want to keep the, that preservation plan slash survey on our agenda. So if, you know, if you have any updates, what can we find out between now and this Thursday about our survey grant plan? Do, can we at least get, can we find out what we can expect for costs? Would that be plausible potentially?
I don't know. I have three very heavy reviews, development reviews that I've got to finish up.
I can certainly tell you what the process is.
Let's at least talk through that and a little more.
You can have it just as an open discussion. And if we know something more, we'll.
Yeah, we'll let you know. We'll see what we can do.
So let's just keep that. We'll keep pushing. And then also what the, yeah, budget process and timing, right? So that we don't miss. It feels kind of like the certificate of merit thing is sort of slid into, I don't know, anybody to talk about this more out of a preservation plan. In terms of what we want to do. And then I don't know if we need to follow up too much on the conservation overlay, historic district piece. I think that's a good informational and if some things happen, but we don't need to say anything on our end for that. So then the only other one that would be a potential action would be, and then this is probably worthwhile. If there's anything that we want to do as far as preservation month, which would be in May, we don't have it on, on this agenda in April. And maybe, I like the idea of the tower. I don't, it's not going to be something that we could probably process that quickly.
It's very nice to get it in paper, you know.
Right, right. But even if it were, we could talk a little bit about how to make that start. And if anybody has any other ideas about just some sort of small gesture for preservation month, let's talk about it.
Does media do something?
The newspaper. Not unless we.
Not unless we tell them.
Tell them to do it.
Maybe an interview with you.
No. Could we get those letters out to the square mile for preservation?
You were joking.
No. Serious chairman of the historic preservation. Time out what's going on.
I think we do a proclamation.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say a proclamation. I mean, this short notice, I think would be, if I would need, would be very hard pressed to really do anything beyond giving a proclamation request or, I'm just going to be.
Better than nothing.
I'm being completely honest here.
Could we get a copy of that letter that I gave you out by, for historic preservation? To the square mile? That's a lot of letters, but I mean, you see.
You know, I, I think it's going to be important to kind of hammer out the demolition code because we wanted to kind of act as notice for that, that that's my. because we wanted to kind of act as notice for that, and that's my initial feeling.
I'd just say for the, for preservation month, to highlight it, to bring it to people's attention.
Again, my only hesitance is it's a pretty short notice. And we have some, Brian's last day was yesterday, so we are realistically.
Down.
Down a very significant person, so I'm just.
The answer is probably no.
Yeah. I'm simply trying to manage expectations right now, so.
Understood.
We're gonna maintain our high expectations.
That's right.
We also.
I'll be a little slack for right now.
Steve, on your list of getting the, finding out how much.
Ten to forty one.
How much, what, paint this? What's there?
We have to know the planner and historic lawyer. Who does the historic preservation, I assume? Andrea Menon, I don't know if you know her, but she's worked for me in Littleton. We can certainly talk to her about it.
You could also call Jenny and ask her what the reference score, what the total was.
I just noticed that Jenny, Emma, and Zia email, asking how much this different plans cost. Her if it would be the last plans that were. They'll get back to me by then.
It's currently. We also have consulting dollars that is within a reasonable range.
Okay. All right, great, great. Well, I thank you all for showing up. Thank you staff for taking time out of your weekend. I'm sure you're excited about that.
So that still shines.
Yes.